Good evening, everybody. information hearings. So I will turn it over to Dr. Mellon.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. As you remember, a week ago, our tactic team made a pretty comprehensive presentation to you by statute, new statute that took effect January 1. This process necessitates two 1028 hearings. Tonight is the first. Next Tuesday, February 6th, which is our regular board meeting, we'll have the second 1028 hearing along with the board meeting. So tonight is simply a public hearing. I would like to give you a quick overview for the benefit of anyone else who might be in our audience who did not have the opportunity. If you remember, it was well over an hour. Well, I'll try to keep it really brief, but in case there's anyone new here, I want to make sure that they have a sense of the project. And then, of course, we'll be opened up to any comments from people in our audience. So if you don't mind, I'm going to start with this process. Okay, and again, if you remember, why are we even doing this? Why did we vote to close Maple and Spring Hill? And again, I think, Board, that's something that's important to clarify. You remember, Board, that the vote was to close Maple and Spring Hill. And so there might be people in our public who think that there's still some option out there to change that. You voted to close them. Our goal is to build a downtown elementary to replace those two buildings. We talked about why would we do this? Well, Title I services, you know, funding has splintered with the two smaller buildings currently at Maple and Spring Hill. We have limited special education services. Not all students' needs can be supported at both of those buildings. There's no direct ELL services at either Maple or Spring Hill. The also-related arts opportunities was another area that we were very much concerned with. Staffing constraints. We have split classrooms, meaning we have teachers teaching multiple grade levels at both buildings. That's not fair to those students. It's not fair to those teachers. We don't have enough collaboration, a lot of these. If I'm the only first-grade teacher in a building, I have no other first-grade teacher to collaborate with. So that's not equitable as relates to our other elementary schools that have multiple teachers at grade levels to be able to collaborate with. We have fewer staff at Maple and Spring Hill. They're stretched more to cover extracurricular activities because those students deserve to participate in extracurricular activities. We've not limited their opportunities to participate, but we have a very limited number of staff. So they have to even work harder in order to supervise those activities. Also, office staff is minimized because at Maple and Spring Hill, they have fewer office staff members than our other elementary schools. Also, in terms of equities, students and families, we have less student population to pull from for extracurricular team participation. We have fewer parents to support PTO and PSO events. We've got great parents at both buildings, but again, you have just a smaller number of people. You have all these activities and events that you want to involve them in, and they're stretched thin as well. Here's, remember, the enrollment decline. So equity was the number one reason, a lack of equity in services and resources at Maple and Spring Hill compared to our other elementaries. The other factor is enrollment decline over time. And you can see the trend at both Maple and then again at Spring Hill. Operating costs, Maple is about $700,000 a year. Spring Hill is about $800,000. The reason why there's a little discrepancy is we have a severe and profound special needs classroom at Spring Hill, and those students are entitled to more services, and that's why the cost is greater at Spring Hill than Maple. If you'll go back, I'm sorry. So you can see the approximate cost to operate a new downtown school is about $800,000. So operationally, we're not doing this for the money, but we have to be sensitive to taxpayers. We would be saving operationally about $700,000 per year, having one downtown elementary as opposed to both Maple and Spring Hill. And you can see the cost to educate per student. Remember, that was data a year ago that Dr. Deichel ran for us. And the reason why Spring Hill, again, is up at that higher level is because of the special needs program, severe program at Spring Hill. So the benefits of a downtown school, optimal learning environment, a downtown presence, teacher collaboration, richer educational experience for students, and specialized support services. Those are all big ticket items. Remember, the downtown tactic team and our principals and teachers and parents, they are the ones that are identifying these things. This isn't coming just for me. I'm just here to present. The facilities and tactic team was established in August of 17. You know that it was a pretty diverse group of people. They looked at the four locations. TEG Architects, the Estopanal Group facilitated these meetings, five meetings, did a great job and allowed for a lot of open conversation and discussion. And here are some slides. We had Maple Elementary reps and Spring Hill reps. Again, those are teachers, administrators, and parents. We had community representatives from the Jeffersonville area, and we also, so we had two slides of those individuals, and we had district representatives as well. The first meeting, the objective statement, why are we doing this? It was to select the optimal downtown Jeffersonville site for an elementary school to serve Greater Clark students in the community. That was developed through facilitation by TEG Architects. That was the objective of the whole tactic team. A site criteria was explained to us. If you can look down through, there are five on this page. Those, I think, are the five major areas, vicinity, context, accessibility, physical characteristics, cost, and schedule. In terms of vicinity, you can see those are broken down even by more specific criteria in terms of looking at the facility, the vicinity. Context, looking at street traffic, environmental, sensory, street lighting. You can see those were factors under context. Accessibility, walkability, bikes, public transportation, school buses. Physical characteristics, what did we want it to look like and what we're going to consider? Cost and schedule, cost, schedule, and disruptions. The second meeting was a chance for the group to just sort of think outside the box. What would this facility, if we had no other constraints, we just were building a new elementary, what would we want that to look like? And that was a great opportunity for everyone to be engaged at that meeting. You can see that we were considering general support, tech resources, close proximity to downtown businesses, updated HVAC, electrical. You can see the word cloud that the group during that meeting created. The third meeting was the conceptual bubble diagram. This may have been the most engaging of all the processes because what they did is the TEG group came in and they gave, divided up all of the different parts of the building into these foam cutouts. And then we had three groups that could work at three different tables and put together what they thought this should look like in terms of how it should be laid out. And that is very helpful in terms of the ultimate, once it goes from concept to reality, that'll really help in terms of laying the building out. Meeting four was site facts and weighting. So we discussed all of those specific site facts, determined the actual criteria weighting because not all the different criteria was weighted the same. So we discussed as a group, how should different criteria be weighted? Some criteria was more important by the group than other things. So the vicinity, you can see, the decision, as you know, was unanimous to go with the Court and Megs site. And so in terms of proximity, you can see some facts that were identified of the Court and Megs. You can see that 50% of the residential areas in the district are within a half mile radius of the site. So walkability was a big factor there, and it was the most populous site of the four In terms of vicinity, again, future change. You saw that, you know, downtown Jeffersonville is engaged in a revitalization process, and they have a plan, and they've been implementing those plans, and more is yet to come. So the downtown would, downtown school would help, again, from an economic development The ease of community access, again, these are all the benefits of the site that we thought we would share with you. The street traffic, some people think that they're concerned about its location on Court and Megs, but truly, it has lower traffic than most of our other elementary sites. We looked at environmental pieces at the different sites, and we saw that there was no major impact environmentally at the Court and Megs site. All four sites have adequate lighting. All four sites were surrounded by, almost equally, with businesses, but you can see some of the different amenities that were around the downtown school, that the school and students and staff could take advantage of. The cultural and historical significance with the connection to the Nahann Field House and using the bones of the old Court and Porter building that's in existence, they thought that that was of value. Walkability, we sort of talked about that already. Kids can bite to it. Public transportation, there are two routes that pass immediately adjacent to the site. School buses, we project about eight buses needed to transport students from their Maple and Spring Hill neighborhoods to that location. Physical characteristics, you could see what's to each north, south, east, and west. Environmentally, again, Board, we ran an environmental Phase 1 study on all four sites. That was important, just to know what was historically on those sites in case, you know, you start to get into construction, you know, any mitigation that you would have environmentally. The Court Megs site did have some former underground storage tanks, but there were no significant risks. Size and shape, these are the different characteristics of that, and we'll go into more detail on that in a minute when we show you some conceptual drawings. The cost, schedule, remember, Board, if each, if the same building was built on all four sites, looking at demolition, phasing, and reuse, what are those either savings or additional costs? It costs less to demolish, there's less to demolish on the Court and Megs site, as you can see. There are no phasing costs because there are no students in that, there's not a building there. They have to worry about moving students around in the building. And then being able to utilize the old Court and Porter building on the corner, that would save us about $637,000. So it actually cuts down on total cost by building at the Court and Megs site.
Does that also include the use of the Nahann Field House?
No, that figure does not because at this time...
Well, that's an addition.
Right. And I'll sort of talk about that additional savings, but you're right. When this was put together, that had not been finalized yet. No delay, one phase. We have to take care of the Franklin Square Building. You know that that's in very poor shape in that area. Again, it would be constructed near the existing Court and Porter schools, so no disruption to those classes either. Meeting five is site selection. So keep in mind that over 20-some people scored this independently and confidentially. All the scoring sheets were sent to TEG Architects, and they compiled the scores. So no one knew anyone scoring, and it came out with Court and Megs scoring slightly above Maple. So you can see how each won. But then, when you start to consider all the other factors of cost in particular, and through other discussion and conversation with the group that night, you know, remember, I asked specifically, was there anyone opposed to the Court and Megs site? Anyone at all on our team? And there was none. So it was a unanimous decision. Conceptually, if we take a look at that, you can see Nahann Field House located to the right part of the screen. We would use in the lower corner, that's the existing Court and Porter building. We would attach the buildings. You can see the structure itself and how it's laid out. You can see a playground facility between the Nahann Field House and the new construction. You have car queuing coming off of Court Avenue. We'd have to work with the city in terms of traffic flow and pattern, but they'd come out making a right-hand turn going down Megs. You have bus queuing on the other side between the building and Court and Porter. Buses would come in on the backside, so they'd come in and out that way. So it's really important you keep car and buses separated. Again, a couple of other views. Again, these are conceptual drawings. This isn't exactly, you know, we have time to make some decisions, but it's important that people get a sense of what could it look like? Here's some internal views, very much state-of-the-art inside of the building. Classrooms, you know, there's flexible seating spaces inside the classrooms. Parking and traffic flow, I've already alluded to that a little bit earlier, but you can see how it'd be laid out. We have approximately 105 onsite parking spots. There was concern out in the community, well, you know, how does that compare? It's more on that site than we have at Maple and Spring Hill combined, but also, there's a parking lot that's located here that you can see that after hours, we would work with the city and the county to be able to utilize that for other special events in the evening. Plus, it's also our intent to, do we need to look at some of the properties around and work with some of those property owners and see if eventually they may be interested in the city or the school system securing that property for more additional parking. Safety. You know, we, if you remember, we had the Assistant Chief at City of Jeff came in. Chief Cavanaugh was on our committee, but he talked about the safety in the area. We have the Sheriff's Department that's right across the street. It may be the safest place in Clark County between the Sheriff's Department and the City of Jeffersonville Police Department. We have a school resource officer that's already located, spent most of his time at Court and Porter. He would service the new elementary school as well. So it'd be a very safe environment. What will happen to the existing buildings? You remember, we talked about Bethel AME Church would, has, is very interested in securing the Maple Building. They have a plan of attack for what they would like to put in place there. They call it the Maple Street Care Center, Community Athletics Recreation and Richmond. It's a nonprofit group. It's an educational entity. So they're a great partner. They've existed in Jeffersonville for 175 years, so they're a stable organization, and they're ready to commit to that building. Again, that's pending, you know, your approval. Just keep in mind, we're just trying to be as prepared as we can for a recommendation and whatever questions or concerns you have. Spring Hill, we're very close to finalizing an opportunity there. It would be another very sustainable, community-based organization that has been in our community for a long time, and we believe strongly that the Spring Hill community would very much appreciate. If the school's not there, they'll very much value this organization. Transition planning, Dr. Hartley, you know, has been working with the two principals on a transition plan. Again, keep in mind that we're thinking that the new building would be built and students would occupy no later than January of 2020. So it's not like we have to have that piece ready immediately, but, you know, it's exciting. It's exciting. They're working together on how do we do some joint family events, you know? How do we get the families and kids involved in the naming of the school and the mascots, the colors, you know? Really make it something that those, both school communities can invest in, and it becomes, it truly becomes theirs. Cost estimates, this was the initial cost factor. The only one under our $15 million goal was the Court and Megs site. And so that was just looking at the site costs, the building construction, and any equipment, and general project cost. That did not include all soft costs. So somewhat, that was somewhat concerning. So if you remember, Teresa Perkins, as you know, was part of our team, and I had had some preliminary conversations that if the Court and Megs site was going to be the choice of the committee, would the Parks Board and the City of Jeff be interested in entering into a partnership to use the Nahann Field House? Why have two gyms on the same piece of property? And we thought, and I knew in talking to an architect locally, that there would be a significant savings if we did not have to build a gymnasium. And so if you go to the next slide, what we did is, we wanted to make sure that the cost of that gym is about $1.6 million. By not building a gymnasium specific to the new structure, by adjoining with Nahann and entering into an interlocal agreement with the city and the Parks Board, that would cut costs by $1.6 million. That gives us some room for soft costs that are going to be into this project because we need to make sure we keep it under $15 million. That's our goal, to try to be as sensitive to the taxpayer as possible. So we'd buy it for no more than $15 million. And it's also important to keep in mind that if we were just to upgrade Maple and Spring Hill as is, keeping roughly 200 students in each building, which is an equity problem, it would cost about $19 million to upgrade those two facilities. So we can build a brand-new building for less than it would cost to renovate the two, which is important for our community to understand. We talked about the annual operational savings of $700,000. We have about an average homeowner in Greater Clark, that's about $125,000 home. It would be an increase, maximum increase to their taxes of $24 for the year. $24 for the year to the average homeowner. So the maximum total interest on bond, on the bond, would be $8,424,359. The debt service levy is currently $9,496,720. That's based upon a rate of .3765 per $100 of assessed valuation. The financing of the project will result in an estimated maximum increase of $1.252 million to the debt service levy. That's an increase in terms of the tax rate of just under five cents. This is per $100 of assessed valuation. So that's maximum tax impact would be five cents to build this $15 million building. If you really put it in the terms that I hope most people would understand, it's $24 for the average homeowner. We also received some good news today that our tax rate in '18 is going down again because assessed valuation is going up again. So that mitigates costs to all of our taxpayers again. Construction fund, there would be, we would be selling these properties to these groups. The funds from those groups would go into a construction fund, so those dollars would go right back to help support capital projects in other parts of our district. I've talked about the Nahann Field House. We had a great meeting the other day with the City of Jeffersonville and the Parks Board, talking about the interlocal agreement. It would be our hope, Board, that we may be able to bring an actual interlocal agreement with the Nahann Field House, the Parks Board, the city at next Tuesday's meeting. We would also like to maybe be able to present who the other community partner is. I'm trying to work on that currently. And then again, the timeline is we begin construction in fall of '18, and students would move into their school during the 1920 school year, but more realistically, probably January of '20. And again, I, this is how I think I wrapped it up last time. I mean, the downtown elementary is a part, a significant part of the economic development of the City of Jeffersonville, particularly the downtown area. It will draw, it will help draw more people to move into the downtown area, which helps all of us. And I think that if you have any questions or if there's something I may have missed, this would be the time just to ask me, and if not, we could open up to public comment.
Board, do you have any questions, comments before we open it up to the public? All right, hearing none. We do have some folks who have signed up to speak. If you would, and I call your name, if you'd come to the podium, you have three minutes. We'd like for you to give us your name and your address, please. And the first one on the list is Lorraine Matthews. Please come forward. And I think, Renee, you'll give her a warning bell when she has one minute left? 30 seconds left. So you have three minutes. If you give us your name and your address, please.
Lorraine Matthews, 311 East Charlestown Avenue, Jeff.
Can you pull that closer to your, thank you.
So I have a problem with this construction, first of all, in downtown Jeff. I really don't see the safety feature that you are all saying about it, that the kids are going to be safe. Trucks are going to be going down over the next 40 years. You're going to have a lot more economic development. I'm a truck driver. 18-wheelers are going to land up down that road someday, and I don't understand how you're going to, the roads are going to be widened, all the stuff that happens over 40 years, and you're going to put it on the main street of downtown Jeff. I just think that's a very bad idea. That's my first point. The second point is, I don't want it in Jeff anyway. You have Maple that has a beautiful, it says elementary, all the maple trees and the landscape and all the running that you can do all around. You can't do any of that here. If you're not in the school, you can't run on the grounds. You're in the city. And I just think that's just awful that these are first graders and second graders. They want to run, they want to play. It's just very, but also about the money. I just think that the sale of these schools should go to pay for this school. I don't think I should have to foot the bill so that way you can get the credit card to buy more school. If you want this school, you pay for this school with the sale of this money. With the operating money that you save for the $800,000, the $700,000, that goes towards the school. You pay for this school, we already paid for it. Those are my opinions.
Thank you. The next on the list is Tara Thompson. Your name and your address.
Hi, Tara Thompson, 2321 Arrow Drive, Charlestown. I am going to talk just a few minutes, but today I'm not going to talk about the deteriorating conditions of both of those buildings that have served us well for several, several years. I'm not going to talk about the continuing cost of keeping those, both of those schools open despite their lower enrollment year after year. I'm not even going to talk about the opportunities that this will present for our downtown, which is growing and growing and growing, and we have to be able to supply that growth with buildings and opportunities for those students that live in that area. What I am going to talk about are the things that, and aspects that I see as a teacher in Greater Clark, as a parent of a Greater Clark student, and as a resident of Greater Clark community. The teacher side of me sees the lowly fourth and fifth grade split teacher of a first-year teacher at that Spring Hill that didn't really have a lot of people to go to to ask for help and didn't, you know, know who to branch out to in her building yet because she hadn't made those connections yet, but there was no one else in her grade level to ask those questions. A collaboration of even one other teacher is a great opportunity, and they don't have that at these small buildings. I'm going to talk about how, as a taxpayer, I am more than willing to put my money... I'm going to talk about how, as a taxpayer, I am more than willing to put my money that I'm getting from Greater Clark as my salary back to this community, because where else are we going to put it? Where else should we put it? It should go to the students, it should go to their education, and no, a beautiful big building does not make these opportunities, the people that live in those buildings do. But as a teacher at North Haven, who is currently going through the renovation, watching these kids look at that renovation and know that they deserve this, there's nothing like it. And to have the experience of those two schools that have these buildings that are falling apart around them, being able to walk into that fir, that first time walking into that building, I wish I'd taken the day off to so I could see their faces. They deserve it, they deserve every bit of it. The concerns that people in the community have, please continue to bring them, because they will be addressed. Every question I had in this whole process has been answered in one way, shape, or form, and it just makes, it makes more sense to me to give them what they need in their community rather than bus them to North Haven, which, please, no, we'd be happy to have you, you know we would, but when they could have this beautiful new building with the collaboration that they deserve in their community, right where they are, where they're need to be, there's nothing that is at equal to it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our list is Ann Darku.
Good job, say my name, that's great. Okay, so, can you hear me?
Your name and your address, Ms. Darku.
My name is Ann Darku, and I live at six oh three East Maple Street in downtown Jeffersonville. I'm grateful to be here tonight to speak to the board and to the community at large for Greater Clark. I am in favor of our new school and fully endorse this Court and Megs site. I think it is an incredible opportunity for our Greater Clark community at large and our students. Let me tell you about what the outcome of Jeffersonville means to me. It means walking downtown, and I'm going to cry, and hearing the sound of my daughter's voice over the loudspeaker at Shims when it's her birthday and she's getting her free turtle sundae. It means being at the Big Four Park for their Big Four birthdays, it's a great idea, I should market that. It means sausage soups and fish fries, but I'll tell you what, I grew up here and I never really thought I'd move back. And when I decided to move back, we looked at houses all over hipster zones, Clifton and Butcher Town, and where we had friends with kids living. We lived in downtown New Albany, and we looked at one house in downtown Jeffersonville. And when we were considering the investment we wanted to make in our family and in our children, we then thought, okay, well, let's think about these schools, let's think about Maple, hmm, it's this little school downtown, and we landed one block from the proposed site of the new school at Court and Megs. Our, we are the first parents of our children, my partner and I, we try to teach them their manners, teach them their values, to be brave, to have grit, to be kind, and to think that there will be a downtown school that supports us in that, a block from us, makes me want to stand here and share and say thank you for that. I have lived in several communities in urban areas and worked in urban schools in Philadelphia and Chicago, I've worked at Western Middle on Main Street more than I can remember, and I think about the opposition and some of the things I'm hearing. When I hear green space, I think the city is your playground. When I hear parking, I think if you're able-bodied and there's accessible parking for those who need it, then park and walk, and a block away, and so I'm guessing I'm giving out my own parking spots. And I'm fine with that. When I think of taxes, I think of investing in our human beings who are going to make our community better. Then I think about safety, and I am sickened that I have children who were raised and had to do intruder drills at their school, no matter where their school is. So to me, it's not where this school sits, I entrust my children to the staff at the school, to the district, and in fact, think those officers who are coming in and out of the courthouse to meet for court dates and to meet for, to meet with prosecutors will, in fact, keep our school even safer. So with that in mind, as a mother of children in the school who will be in third, no, who will be in third and fourth grade when the school, new school opens, as a property owner a block from the proposed site, as a child of Greater Clark educators, as an alum of Greater Clark myself, North Haven, Parkwood, River Valley, and Jeff, as someone who works in the community to mobilize leaders, to encourage community engagement, I implore you to support this new school and this site at Court and Megs. I entrust my most beloved daughters to you to make them better in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Denise Elmore.
Good evening, I'm Denise Elmore. My address is twenty-five thirteen Blaxton Mill Road in Parsville. I live in a Greater Clark neighborhood, my children attend Greater Clark schools. As a, an employee of Greater Clark, as a parent of Greater Clark students, I gladly give you twenty-three dollars. And let's be honest, as an employee of Greater Clark, I give way more than that, way more than that to our students, but twenty-three dollars, I'll give you twenty-three dollars per kid I've got, too. So I think that's a small investment in our future. The future of our community depends on having a progressive and twenty-first century school in our downtown area. And just on the subject of equity, because I know that was part of the presentation made by the tactic team last week. Coming from a larger school to a much smaller school, I do see a lot of issues with equity. And as an employee and as a, a former teacher, and I will always consider myself a teacher no matter what role I play in the schools, as a teacher, I see that we have a great deal of inequity coming from a larger school into a smaller school. Teaching is hard, it's a really hard job, and our teachers are responsible for so much. I mean, they teach reading and writing and math and science and social studies, and then, you know, there is character and all of these other soft skills that our teachers teach day in, day out, manners, and, you know, just to be a good person. And it's, we're highly accountable, all of us, for all of these things that we teach. If I have a partner next to me and I'm able to share that responsibility and we can help each other, or if I have two partners and the three of us can help each other, and I can go to PD and bring back my information and share with my partners, and they can bring me information and share that with me, that is invaluable. It's invaluable as far as honoring my time, but it's also invaluable to our students because our students benefit. When I learn something as a teacher or as an administrator, students benefit. When there are three of us working together to learn and to grow and to be better educators and help each other, our students will always benefit from that. So at Maple and at Spring Hill, we are asking teachers to be masters of all. So they, they absolutely have to do everything by themselves, and in many cases, we ask them to be masters of all in two grade levels in one classroom, and that is highly inequitable. And I wish for more for our students and also for our teachers, and for that, I would be happy to give you much more in order to build this downtown school, but I really think twenty-three dollars per year to invest in our future is a very small price to pay.
Thank you. The last person on my list is Kelly Porter.
I'm Kelly Porter, my address is thirty-one oh one Gardner Boulevard in Jeff. I just want to start by saying I am a teacher at Maple, and I'm here tonight to say I cannot wait till we get this new school. Little disappointed that I'm not having to move over Christmas, but I'm not, I will accept that. I teach kindergarten, so I'm used to talking to five-year-olds all day and not adults, I don't like doing this. But I had to come because my heart is at Maple. My heart is with those five-year-olds that I teach every day, and I see the things that we're going to have at our new school, the technology that we're going to have, that our wireless connections will work all the time, that they don't work now. I see that the restrooms, the toilets will flush and not leak on the floor like they do now. I see the water fountains that will work, that we might have three in a line that only one of them works now. I don't like band-aids to fix things, I want a new, brand-new school, and we deserve it. I currently have twenty-six kindergarteners in my room, and we have ten extra that couldn't fit in with me, so I'm in another class with first graders. That's not fair, that's not fair to those kids, it's not fair to the first graders and it's not fair to the kindergarteners either. It's not fair to that teacher that has to teach both grade levels. So I'm planning for her and I both, and, you know, helping her out as much as I can, but it's hard. I wish I had somebody else to help me with the six and a half hours that I have to plan for five-year-olds to keep them busy all day long. And let me tell you, if I don't have an activity to go next, it's chaos. And, and I don't like chaos. So I'm, I'm just excited about the opportunity to work with more teachers, to have brand-new things, to not have things that are fixed with a band-aid for now. Just the things that they'll have, the staffing, the building, the heating and air in our room, you never know if you're going to need a jacket or not, one minute it can be kind of cold the next night, so, you know, those things will be nice to have secured. Our building is closing, it's, it's a done deal, so build us a new one and not force us into another school with somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the folks that have signed up, but if there's somebody in the audience that would like to make comments, you're certainly welcome to step forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, I will close the hearing, and thank you all for coming.